Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. This June 20th, 2017. We have six of seven planning commissioners present with the exception of Commissioner Quinney, who's excused this evening. And we thank you for showing up this evening and participating in the public process and hope you feel welcome and at ease with going through the meeting today. We have three items on our consent calendar if anyone has any action they'd like to take on those items. Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I address all three?
Please.
I move to approve the minutes from our last meeting, the June 6th, 2017 meeting. I move that...
You can just say approve.
Oh, alright. I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Do we have a second? So we have a motion by Commissioner Sikoski and a second by Commissioner Green. Any discussion to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero for the consent calendar as listed in the staff packet. Which brings us to our first public hearing this evening. Pioneer Technology EDA area amended the future land use map for potentially 1,700 acres, generally located in the southwest portion of the city and adjacent to the established Pioneer Technology EDA. And the city of West Jordan is the applicant. And Mr. McCandless has this item?
Yes. Thank you. Members of the planning commission, Mr. Chairman. Back in 2016, the city council created what we call the Pioneer Technology District Economic Development Area, which is basically on the southwest corner of the city. And as part of that, the city council wanted us to, the city, to take a look at the land uses within that area. Let's go to the first slide here. The area that we're talking about, you can sort of see it here, it's just kind of a red line, red dashed line that goes around. This is the New Bingham Highway, the old Bingham Highway. This is a copy of the current land use map. The city council wanted, I think, they created a subcommittee consisting of members of the planning commission, the city council. A couple of you served on that committee to take a look at the uses or land uses in that, this area. And that subcommittee came up with a couple of options. As I mentioned in the pre-meeting, we can toggle back and forth to just show you what, or show you each of those options. So again, this is the current map. And this is the first option that was developed. What's that? So again, this is the first option was developed, and I'll toggle back to the current map. One of the things that we looked at is that we've got the Willshire Place, and then we've got a single-family residential subdivision here. This, the area that's in gray is basically the area that's shown on the future land use map as light industrial. This was low-density residential. This area here was medium-density residential. Here, to sort of kind of as a buffer between the residential and the manufacturing uses to the south. And then we also had kind of a corridor at the wind-up, U-111, to the intersection of 90th South and U-111. The idea at that time was to have everything basically residential to the west of U-111, and then just kind of contain that manufacturing district there. We did make a number of changes, so again, I'll flip back and forth between these two. So we'll start here. One of the things that we did is flip the park from this location to here. Again, this is option number five. And really, in the subcommittee, one of the things they really looked at was, and they I think agreed to, was just limiting the area of industrial to the south side of New Bingham Highway. So that's this area here. So in order to give a little bit of buffering between these residential uses and the manufacturing areas, we shifted that park space further to the east, to south of the water tanks. The other area that we looked at, and as part of that subcommittee, was the area that's long, just south of this, on that current, oops. On the current land use map, you can see that there's a commercial that's located here. We showed an area of mixed use. And with that addition of that, the industrial area here to the south, what we thought about doing is putting a commercial area here along, at this intersection, and then have professional office that borders U-111. So basically, what we've done is added a strip of professional office to U-111, and then rather than have mixed uses, to extend that professional office here. If you look further to the east, the subcommittee talked about making a division line here. This area would be basically a big research park, which we think is ideally located because it's fairly close to that, that commercial node here on 90th South. And then this area, reserve it for the more estate lots, and then keeping those washes, the washes intact as open space. These areas that are here are basically the slopes that are over 30%. They're fairly steep and undeveloped, but we think that it adds for a nice open space amenity, along with the washes through this area and through also the research park area. So we basically got very low density, an area of low density, and then medium density here, so it does provide a transition towards U-111. So are there any questions on this option?
Any questions for staff? Or I guess the applicant?
I have a question. The blue box, just to the left of your cursor right now, what the heck is that?
Oh, that's designated as a PF. It would be a future school site.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I couldn't figure out what it was there for, so...
These other little dots are typically water tanks. The blue ones with the dots on them.
When we take this map to the city council for consideration, we'll add labels to these maps, because we understand that the colors don't always translate clearly in print or electronically, so...
Yeah, here, for example, it's kind of hard to tell the difference between the very low density and the low density, but there is a line here.
And the area that's just north of the PO on U-111, that's, the way I read that, that's some sort of community commercial?
It's community commercial. This area right here, that's further to the east, is a regional commercial, so that'd be along lines of Jordan Landing.
Okay.
So this would be more like the Smiths.
The Smiths Market, 56th.
Yeah.
Okay.
Restaurants, things like that. Alright, so that's option number five. Then I'm going to go to the next option. Real, let's see, I'm trying to think if there's any other real changes. So I'm going to flip back and forth between option five and six. And you see on the, that the area along U-111 kind of remains the same. That's the area along, here, and the residential here. And then, and then what this does, this option does, is it brings in more of the business and research park right in this area, and then the low-density, and it's kind of ringed by low-density residential here with a park here. And what it also does is it shifts, both options shifts the school site from here to here. So this is one that's just got a lot more business and research park area, so that's basically the second option. And I can flip between that one and here, so here's the commercial again, and then this would be the option number six. So that's what's on the table before you. When we, just as information item, when we did the, back in 2012, we recognized that this area would be in flux anyway, because I think we identified this as an area for future study, and I think that's, this accomplishes that, that request from the general planning committee. So are there any questions on option six?
Commissioner Luthy.
I was on the subcommittee, so this is just a reference that I don't know that was hit. So on option six, it removes the option of the very low density, correct? It's just low. Correct. So very low goes away completely in option six, not five.
Correct.
Okay.
And just to follow up with that, curious why on option six, it was thought to move the low density down toward the bottom of the bench and keep research on the top of the bench versus option five? What was the prevailing idea?
I think the main reason for that was just that it would be similar to what we've got up on the east bench, where you've got a research park that's similar to the research park by the view. So it'd be kind of a bench location for that.
Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you. I was also on the subcommittee, and one of our reasonings too was that we didn't want people to have to drive through the research park in order to get down to the community commercial, give them a little bit better access and kind of a pedestrian environment.
Thank you. Any other pros and cons to discuss between options five and six? Any questions for the city or applicant? Commissioner Luthy.
I think the thing that we just need to look at is what do we want there? Do we want low-density housing, or do we want more of the research park? Because you can have a mix of the both, but if you really are going for research park, then it's clear which one you're going to want to go for, so...
Right. We want residential. The pros and cons I see are, you know, we're the home of the good neighbor, but also it's a bedroom community, you know, if we have more homes, then people can live and work. But then also economic development, very important, so expanding the research park area, bringing in dollars that help the city versus residences that consume more than they produce in terms of revenue to the city. Any other thoughts? Just good to have some consideration back and forth on these options. Commissioner Green.
So, and maybe you can just give me a rough idea. On option five, the, not that one, that one, the research park area between, is that 90th South and whatever, the area just to the upper-left where you're at, that, how many acres is that ballpark, that particular almost square?
See, this was, option five, it's 146 acres roughly.
And then how big is the area on options, would be expanded if we put that other area in option six on?
312.2.
And do we have any idea how big Research Park at University of Utah is?
According to Wikipedia, let's see, I had it here a second ago. It's around 300 and, let's see. I can pull that up. I had it here just a second ago. Oh, 320 acres.
That's the entire Research Park.
That's the entire Research Park up at U-111.
So this would be, if we do the whole thing, it would be equivalent of, it would be the equivalent of Research Park.
Commissioner Luthy.
I felt, my recommendation on this was, I felt that option five was the better option because this is our prime real estate, and if we're going to draw people here that want to invest in the large estate lots that we are losing people to, to our neighbors, this is the only real real estate we have to draw them to. So I felt like it was, it would be a shame for West Jordan to, not that Research Park isn't a nice idea, but going back to the idea of the people that are going to be working in this area that may want to live closely, they now head to our neighbors, because we don't have anything available to draw them in. So that was my personal opinion on this. I lean towards option five.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Hanson.
Commissioner Luthy pretty well summed it up for me. I hate to see us completely eliminate the very low density. I think we should provide some of that rather than have it all research park. I think we need to provide that so that people do not move to our surrounding cities. Thank you.
Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you, Chairman. My question is, what is the need for low-density housing? I mean, you look at, I hate to use the word millennials, but their preference is downsizing small lots, not a lot of yard care. They want to go and play and enjoy family time and not spend it in the yard. And I look at that as the future of our city, and what do we do to attract that workforce? And is low-density housing something they want? Or would they prefer to have, you know, less lot, less yard care? I don't know. But I think we need to take that into consideration.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Luthy.
I disagree with that. I think a lot of people of my generation are looking for large areas that are not available here. Most of my colleagues and friends have headed to cities south of here because they have that, that we don't. I think we have plenty of medium-density housing. Maybe we need to attract more higher-cost medium-density housing, but I think we have plenty of that in our city. I think we need to have somewhere that's a safe hold for low-density housing. I think that there is a real desire and a real need for that.
Commissioner Green.
My comment was along that same line, is that, well, I think that we need a mix of housing. I agree with the fact that I, that I'd like to see us with some very low-density housing. I mean, when you drive up to the Upper East Side of Sandy off of Wasatch Boulevard and the Upper East Side of Draper with some of the lots that they have, now they have some small lots up there too, up off Traverse Ridge, but when you look at some of the size of the houses that they have, they sell pretty quick right now. And so I, yeah, I'd hate, I think that, I guess my thought is, is that I don't want to eliminate and make us less multi-dimensional. You know, when we're talking about the mixes and uses and those kind of things, I mean, I can see that area to the southwest being that far corner down there, I can see that with the gulches and the open area, an awful lot like we see up on, in the Dimple Dell area and those kind of things. And I'd hate to eliminate some of that from our city because we're, now, I think it'd be great to have businesses, don't get me wrong, because they pay, they generate a lot of taxes and don't drain services nearly as much, but I think we, if we're going to set a, I mean, I think what this does is it sets the vision for the future of the city. And I'd hate to eliminate that particular dimension from the city, because, you know, if trends change, we could always, we can always change that, but, and I know that there's going to be a burden of proof there and a presumption, but I'd rather set it aside for that than I would to make it more a business park.
Commissioner Sikoski.
Just giving you an opening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Seeing as this was noticed as a public meeting, let's open that up to the public. Let's hear what you have to say. After all, we're here to serve you on behalf of the city council. So the public hearing is now open, if you'd like to come up to the podium and tell us If you could please state your name and address for the public record, please.
Sure. My name is Nikki George, and I live at 9081 South Coppering Avenue, just across from the land we're talking about. One of my larger concerns is as we look at all, bringing in all of these houses, wow, our schools are burdened over there right now, and I know the district hasn't set aside money to build there. And so I just hope that we can keep those thoughts in mind as our, just making sure that our kids are cared for. And then I also agree with Commissioner Luthy. I think that the people that I know of are looking for larger lot sizes, and I like that direction, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public comments section. Commissioner Green.
The one thing that I think we do need to take a look at, and I think if we do it as business parks are very low residential, I think both of those are the appropriate means to limit the amount of schools that we need out there. Either one of these options, I think, will be viable to limit the number of kids that have to go to a school, because we're talking about larger estates, we're not talking about eight houses to an acre, we're talking one house to every two or three, hopefully we're talking one house to every couple of acres. And so, you know, I think that's going to help us. And using that big chunk for the PO, the other chunk for the commercial, the community commercial, the future parks, I think that's going to help us restrict the number of the issues with schools.
Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was on the committee who worked on this, and kind of some of the reasoning behind it. On option five, the reason that we decided to lay it out like this is because 90th South, as you come in as a main corridor, which would give everybody who worked in this research park an opportunity to go right through our community commercial. They're going to use that community commercial, there's a nice park that goes between the professional office space, it provides just a really nice environment to work in. Also, with professionals that typically would work in a research park type of environment, we really have to attract them out here. One of the reasons that the research park up at the University of Utah is so successful is because of the University of Utah. So trying to attract a lot of research out here, we also have to provide a space that they can live and work and be comfortable. So that's why we have the range of housing options just below, along with professional office space. So all of that is kind of a self, just a nice little node in the city. It could have its own sense of place. And then also, we put the community commercial right along New Bingham Highway there, because that's the road that runs out to Copperton. And we can collect a lot of business going up Bacchus Highway and on the road out to Copperton. That would be the closest place for our fine friends in Copperton to shop, so we can bring in all of that business at the same time. I feel like the, having the professional office space along U-111, which is a fast road, gives a nice buffer to the residential area behind it. And then where we have these green cut-throughs where the washes are, that is a really nice, we could put trails along there and have a really nice interconnected, very pedestrian environment in that side of the city. So I feel like it lends itself very well to low-density, low-density and medium-density, and provides all of the things that those folks would need.
Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. The reason I feel that option five is a better option is due to the fact that it does not eliminate the very low density. And if we're going to try and attract businesses that are going to bring jobs to our city, as we've found in the past, when they come here, they are high-paying jobs, and they don't find the type of housing they're used to having. We need to supply the larger lots, the larger homes that they're used to having, so that they don't go south. We are providing an area for a research park or whatever, but we are also providing them a place to live close to where they work. If we completely eliminate that, they will go south. Or east to Draper. So, you know, if we don't supply that, we're going to lose out on those type of housing.
Commissioner Green.
Can I make a motion that I moved forward option number five to the city council for consideration as presented in this report?
You can certainly do that.
I make that motion.
Is there a second to Commissioner Green's motion?
One second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Hatch. Any discussion to the motion, specifically Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted, before we solidified the motion, I also wanted to add, one, a couple reasons on option six why I don't feel option six would be good, just for benefit of information to the city council. If I could have option six pulled up on the map there. Thank you. The research park that is proposed here is large enough that it would rival that of the University of Utah. I don't believe we're going to be able to bring enough research out to the west bench to provide, to actually fill this up. It would be a wonderful area, and the way that it's designed, I'm sure there'd be lots of open space, but I think we'd have too much open space if we left this, this size. And the other thing, just to kind of echo what Commissioner Hanson said, is that we need a nice environment for high-dollar professionals to live. If we don't, if we don't provide that, then they will move somewhere else. Our goal is to have people come to West Jordan and work here, but we also want them to spend their money here, because that's the other side of revenue for the city. So we would be missing, you know, half of the benefit that West Jordan could have from this. So that's my reasoning behind why option five is better.
Thank you. And also, while we're discussing, thank you for the comment regarding schools. I think that is very important, and I think option five would give a little more flexibility to that. And yes, I've been a PTA president at elementary, junior high, and high school level, served on their community councils, and it's, it is an interesting factor that we deal with that the school district does need to service the students, they just don't have to say "how." You know, is that more portable, is it pocket bussing, is it double scheduling year-round schools, what is it? But, you know, they will be taken care of, but we want to make it be the most, well, the least invasive way possible that students and parents are used to. Were there any other school considerations that were talked about with regard to option five versus option six, besides moving the location of what looks to be a big enough area for a high school?
Yeah, we looked at that closely, Mr. Chair. Actually, just today, I was on, while I exchanged emails with the Jordan School District, and you can, you'll notice, I'll point out here, that if you look at the current land use map, there's this large public facilities area is earmarked. Well, we took the opportunity, since we're looking at this area, to move it to where Jordan School District actually closed on property, which is up here. That's 35 acres earmarked for future middle school and elementary school. And so they mentioned that they feel comfortable with us keeping an elementary school up here, west of U-111. So while we're not legally obligated to follow the capacities that the Jordan School District has, we do have a good relationship, and we do work with them, as does Harriman and Riverton and all the other cities within their boundaries. So they're aware of this plan, they said they didn't have any issues with that, and so I just wanted to let you know that as recent as this afternoon, they've seen this.
Thank you. Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also would like to just make a note that where schools are important to us, it doesn't fall under the purview of the planning commission to decide schools. That's something that's handled by the Jordan School District, and we really aren't, we don't have any kind of legal grounds to... don't have any kind of legal grounds to really talk about that, other than, yes, we know we need them, and we've kind of got places earmarked. But, you know, as you can see with where they bought the property versus what our future land use showed, the school district does what the school district does. So just as for information for you guys, we really don't have any kind of control over that.
Any other discussion to the motion? Does anybody need to hear the motion again? It's been a while. Okay. Fuck. Commissioner Green, and seconded by Commissioner Hatch, yes, 140, a positive recommendation for option five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero. Thank you for the in-depth conversation and for the subcommittee meeting, for your time and effort to help us because this definitely affects people, affects the present and the future. Thank you very much. Item number three on the agenda is another text amendment coming our way to amend the 2009 City Code, Title 13, Use Tables to Add Independent Elderly Housing, Nursing Homes, Assisted Living Centers, or Similar Uses in the PO and/or Other Zones with Citywide Applicability. The City of West Jordan is again the applicant, and Mr. McCandless has this item as well.
Thank you. Usually called back in May, the Planning Commission considered a request to allow elderly housing, nursing homes, assisted living centers in the professional office zoning district, and that's through application of the SHO and the senior housing overlay. What we needed to do, though, is that there's, even though it's pretty clear in the ordinance, there's no reference in the professional office zoning district. So what we needed to do is simply add a reference to the professional office zoning districts, whether or not these uses are permitted and conditional. In that zoning, in that professional office zoning district, we already have convalescent centers that are listed as a conditional use. These would be additional uses. And one of the things that we talked about in our pre-meeting was, I don't think you, was adding just a point of clarification or a subscript down below the table of permitted and conditional uses, that these are allowed as a conditional use in the professional office zoning district, but provided that the senior housing overlay district is, or that the property is zoned to a senior housing overlay district, just to keep it in line with what we had originally talked about to allow these uses as elderly housing. So with that, our recommendation is approval, subject to just the addition of that subscript statement.
Thank you, Mr. McCandless. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll open up this item to the public. If you have any comments regarding this item, please step forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public comments section and discuss among the Planning Commission. Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion that based on the findings set forth in the staff report, I move that the Planning Commission forward a favorable recommendation to the City Council to amend the 2009 City Code, Section 13, 5D, 2, Table Permitted and Conditional Uses to Allow Independent Elderly Housing, Nursing Homes, Assisted Living Centers, or Similar Uses in a Professional Office Space PO Zone, with the condition that on the permitted and conditional uses table, where it says C for conditional use, that there would be a footnote added, and that that footnote would read, in, I guess, paraphrasing, that the zoning would have to fall, or would have to fall under the SHO zone in order for it to be permitted.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthy.
I would like to second, as long as it says the overlay zone of senior housing.
Thank you. Commissioner Sikoski, is that amenable to you?
Yes, that's amenable.
Great. And to follow along with that, I just noticed on the agenda, it says in the PO and/or Other Zones in the recommended motion in the staff packet, and as articulated by Commissioner Sikoski, it omits and/or Other Zones, but I think that wording that Commissioner Luthy just suggested would probably cover that. It just seems to be nebulous if we're saying and/or Other Zones. Mr. McCandless?
Yeah, I think we did that, just for noticing purposes, just in case the Planning Commission wanted to broaden that out.
Okay.
But in this case, we just want to keep it specific to the PO zone.
Great, great. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Any other discussion to the motion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero. Thank you to our staff for lots of work that they do to clarify for city purposes, which brings us to the last item on our agenda, another text amendment to the 2009 City Code, in Sections 15 and 13, and we have a section, nope, I guess that's it, just Sections 15 and 13, various sections of the land use and zoning map and text amendments, and this is for citywide applicability as well. City of West Jordan is again the applicant, and our legal counsel, Mr. Murray, is presenting tonight, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So there's two primary purposes of this ordinance. One is to create a process for map amendments, either to the land use map or that are zoning amendments that are inconsistent with the land use map, to have an orderly fashion to come before the Planning Commission and Council. Then the second of two ideas is dealing with applications from the public regarding general plan and zoning text amendments. And in that situation, those amendments would not be able to be unilaterally brought on the initiative of the public, but would have to convince the staff, Planning Commission, and Council to move forward with those text amendments by convincing the city that those really are citywide applicability instead of applicable to just individual project areas. The main part of the ordinance is dealing with the map amendments that are inconsistent with the current land use map, and the idea to this process is all of the applications that come into the city from the public during a three-month period would all be heard by the Planning Commission at one time. So for example, applications coming in January, February, March would all be heard the last meeting of April by the Planning Commission. The idea being is it would allow for a more orderly review of those applications to make sure that they're being consistently resolved, and so there's a meeting to focus completely on those applications, and especially in light of reviewing them through the lens of the, or point of view of the general plan. The Council has indicated that their meetings, that they generally would only like to hear one of these per meeting, to make sure that they have ample time to hear from the public. They've found if they have two or three in a specific meeting, then it's, they're not able to give the full attention. So they would like, and that's reflected on the chart in the proposed ordinance, to just review one of those per meeting, to make sure that none of those is short-changed for the time that is needed. Other than that, there are a few technical changes here and there. There are a few, there is one last substantive amendment that we were talking about in the pre-meeting, which would make it clear that the Planning Commission does have the ability when they're looking at zoning map amendments to approve as modified by the Planning Commission or to approve in part or deny in part. And the main thing is, we looked at the general plan, is that Goal Two of the comprehensive general plan is to continually and consistently update the future land use map for ease of reference administration. And I think that this proposed ordinance meets that concern or that goal because it would allow you to, on a periodic basis, once every three months, review these amendments, but then to be able to be consistent since you're reviewing them as a group. But that's all I have in the way of a presentation, unless you have further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
No, I can't remember what question.
That's right. We'll come back to you.
Oh, I know, I know what it was.
Okay.
If the Council decided that they wanted to hear them all together, under the way the ordinance was written with the soonest possible meeting, they could hold a special meeting and hold them all together if that's what they chose to do. So what I guess I'm asking is that if they chose to hold a special meeting, the way the ordinance is written, it would allow that flexibility? Because it would be the soonest available meeting, and that's what they would schedule. So would you read it that way?
Yes. The only limitation that I have in that asterisk footnote is that there needs to be at least 20 days from the Planning Commission quarterly map meeting until the Council hears them. And the reason for that is so that we can have adequate time to set the public hearing, reflect any of the exact recommendations from the Planning Commission and those kind of things. But yeah, other than that, they can hear more than one if they choose, so as many as they want. In fact, that was my initial recommendation to them, that they do the same as you as a Planning Commission and hear them all at once, but they still maintain that flexibility if they want, because the way it reads is preferably only one application, but it's whatever they want, so.
Thank you. And just to make sure we're all on the same page, the asterisk under that on page one, we would be having a special meeting as well, correct? At least that's my recollection of the meeting of May 30th, is that we as a Planning Commission would have a quarterly meeting in addition to the two that we do each month, like on a fifth Tuesday?
Yeah, and the way that reads, it says the last regular or last special meeting of the month, or as otherwise scheduled. So I, you know, assuming, it just depends on how it plays out. If you had a meeting where you had like no agenda items, then you wouldn't need a special meeting, or if you only had one or two items, you could bump forward or to the following meeting. Otherwise, you could do a special meeting, and I left the flexibility in case that maybe that meeting might go over to the beginning of the next month. But yeah, that's the idea, that it would most likely be a special meeting, like on a fifth Tuesday, unless you could free up a regular meeting.
Great, because as Commissioner Luthy mentioned, you know, we don't want to get inundated with too many at one time, whether it's the Planning Commission or City Council. Mr. Langford.
So just to add to that, we'll do our very best to manage your agendas so that we have appropriate time for each item, but the intent is to keep it consistent with the two meetings per month, and if we get just a deluge of applications, then we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. But I wouldn't expect that we do that. That's my intent, at least.
Okay, so your intent is just to stay with the first and third Tuesdays?
Yeah.
And not have that quarterly extra meeting?
Especially with the Council's new desire to have these joint Planning Commission-City Council workshops. You know, we want to preserve those months that have the five Tuesdays for those types of meetings.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify that it's my intent to meter out these things in an appropriate manner, that we're not swamped, but the applications aren't piling up. So there's going to be some give and take, but I think you guys do a great job getting through and getting to the meat of each issue. And I think this was mentioned in the pre-meeting, because the Planning Commission's, you know, primary responsibility is land use, you're not having to worry about budgets and other peripheral items that the City Council has to worry about. We can typically hit these items and get through them pretty quick, so.
Well, thanks for being the meter man.
Sure.
And I personally think that it's great that we have the meeting on the 30th of May, and then already we have items on the agenda. You know, we're moving forward. It's good to see that the time and deliberation was well spent with talking about maps, talking about schedules, talking about land use. And thank you, Mr. Murray, for mentioning on page two, the, let's see, what item is that? Actually, I guess it's page three on Criteria 1, because I wanted to bring that up, too, because quite often I get asked, by virtue of being a former general plan, Planning Commission member, you know, why are you making these zoning changes? Why is this and that changing? Well, actually, in the general plan, as you articulated, we need to continually and consistently update the future land use map. So it's a delicate balance. Certainly, having spent three years on that committee, I want to be true to what we did, but also realize that sometimes things need to be updated. It's a tough balancing act. Great, thank you. Any other deliberations or any other questions for Mr. Murray? All right, this was noticed as a public hearing as well. So if anyone would like to speak on this item, please come forward at this time. Seeing we don't have any, we'll close the public comments and bring it back to the Planning Commission. Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. Based on the findings set forth in this staff report, I move that the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation to the City Council to amend the West Jordan 2009 City Code Sections listed in the staff report.
Commissioner Luthy.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Sikoski, a second by Commissioner Luthy. Discussion of that motion. Mr. Murray.
Did you want to include the amendments that we discussed as far as pre-numbering and so forth in the pre-meeting?
Commissioner Sikoski.
Yes.
And we'll come back to you, Commissioner Green. Thank you.
That's what I was going to talk about, which is the amendments.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we did want to include the changes that were discussed in the pre-meeting as well.
And can we please be specific on what those changes are?
Yes. So in the pre-meeting, as discussed, there is, the text is essentially the same, it's just broken out under C into four separate sections, and then under Section 5 and 1370, it breaks it out again into five separate sections, and then on the back in B, it breaks it out into three separate sections. It just makes it for easier reading and dissemination.
No change of wording, just paragraph breaks?
Correct. So we include all of those in the motion.
There is just a slight change of wording in the authority for zoning map and zoning text amendments, just making it more of a clarification, but adding that the Planning Commission has the ability to approve as modified or to approve in part and deny in part.
Thank you. So Commissioner Sikoski, that works with that updated motion?
Yes.
And Commissioner Luthy, do you accept that amendment?
Yep.
Thank you. Any discussion to this amended motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero. So we're done with the official agenda, and I feel badly that Ms. Larson left after the consent calendar because she had an item on there, and I meant to publicly recognize her for all her work. And so, Mr. Langford, will you be seeing her tomorrow? Will you please give her our best regards with her future endeavors and tell her how much we've appreciated working with her, her professionalism and friendliness, and we wish her the best? Thank you. And then also, is anybody planning on marching in the parade and throwing candy or riding in a golf cart on July 4th, Independence Day?
I'll be out of town.
Since it falls on a Tuesday, I'll be out of town the weekend preceding that, but I'm planning on it. My kids think it'll be kind of fun to ride in a car, so that's why I've got a new Planning Commission shirt here. Thank you. Want to look good for the city. Thanks to the city for the shirts.
Yeah, I just sent my email to Heather today, so.
Okay. Well, let's see, then, our next meeting would be...
Scott, Scott something.
No, go ahead. Yes, our next meeting, because we have, just a reminder, because the first Tuesday in July is the 4th, Independence Day, we don't have a meeting. So the next meeting, I believe, is on the 11th, right? We moved it, so just to be aware of that, since it's not on the regular rotation, we've got a meeting on Tuesday, the 11th, and we don't have one on the 18th. So we're not doing first and third in July, we're doing just the second week. And I don't believe we'll have a board of adjustment meeting. Probably not.
No.
Okay. Great.
And I will not be there on July 11th, so if you'll excuse me now, then that'll be easier for the minutes next time.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. And Mr. Langford, you have something for us?
So yeah... So yeah, um, since we only have one meeting in July, we'll be making up for it in August. Um, as we discussed at our council commission workshop in May, uh, we're planning to have a, another combined, uh, meeting on August 29th. And in preparation for that meeting, I was talking with Envision Utah today and they would like to, uh, make a little presentation training, similar to what WFRC did at our last meeting. Um, however, they, they requested that I talk to you and the council, uh, to, to ask you, um, if there are any specific land use or planning issues that you would like them to talk about, um, you can send me an email and I'll forward that on and we'll, we'll get it all geared up and tailored specific to West Jordan. Cause at the last meeting, it was kind of broad and general and this is what we are envisioning for the southwest portion of the valley. Well, they're going to take it finer grain at the next meeting and talk about West Jordan. So as you have ideas come to, to mind, please send me an email and I'll work with them to get that all teed up for you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sokowski?
Thank you. Um, I can tell you one right away and it's the PC zone and the PRD zone. We'd really like to hash that out a little bit, cause I know that we, we've been talking about kind of rewriting that section and having some input from them would be fantastic.
Commissioner Green?
And I would like to publicly thank Commissioner Hatch for, uh, working with the Salt Lake, the, the Salt Lake visitor people, the change in the map that actually puts West Jordan back on the map.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Yes, thank you for doing things outside of planning commission to promote West Jordan. Anything else for this evening, Commissioner Sokowski?
Move to adjourn.
Great. We stand adjourned until Free Slurpee Day, 7/11.